Clear and either a not been able to meet this afternoon because of the impending weather. So hopefully, as you can see, we should have a pretty brief actual council meeting today. So hopefully, we can get out of here before the accumulation really starts. But first item on our work session agenda is our quarterly goal update. Mr. Tullis?
Sir Mayor, council members, if you look in your work session packet, you'll see that I've broken up the goals that we set at our strategic planning meeting into the four quarters that we discussed. So under Q1, we have some action items to bring to you over the next probably forty-five days. All of these are, I think, accomplishable. That's what when we had the strategic planning meeting, that's one of the things that we talked about is can we accomplish these? So these are our homeless issue briefing. I talked to our city attorney. We had a meeting back in December regarding that, about mid-December at the airport with our local law enforcement agencies, district attorney, et cetera. So we have that ready to come in brief at a future council meeting. We're currently working on a version of the handbook. Like to get you a draft of that in February to review. We're going to do quarterly updates on nuisance properties and customer service experience for city services. That was something that you said in the strategic planning meeting you'd like to hear. So you'll see that in Q1, Q2, 3, and 4. I think you all may have received an invitation for our rec and aquatic center to be opened. So we have a date set for that. So barring any other snow days or anything else that might prevent us from doing that there in early February, we'll be opening that facility to the public. And then one other one that I added that didn't come out of the strategic planning meeting, but I felt that we needed to give you an update pretty soon on was our municipal election plan. One of those things would be to certify the new recreation center as the polling place.
And the current plan would be to do that in the Musso Gym?
It is. So talking to Blake and formerly Billy Powell about that, we have the ability to just utilize that space, bring people in through that particular door, and still keep other activities going in the gym.
All right. Is that your quarterly update?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Jonathan, on our quarterly update? Does everybody think that's an accurate representation of what we put together last week? If y'all, you know, study that over the next, you know, few days, if you see anything that's missing, just let myself or Jonathan know, and we'll make sure to get it added. Next item is to review our...
Oh, I got one question.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
The notes and everything that we took on the boards, has that been reduced down to something that can be emailed just to...
Yes, sir.
I took some notes, but I didn't get them all.
Yes, sir. So I have the SWAT, the ten-year, the five-year, and then our Vision 2025. I sent a draft to council president just to review it for accuracy. And once he gives me the go-ahead, I'll send it out to everyone.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I got that this morning. I glanced at it, but I'll give it a little more thorough scrubbing, but it looked pretty good to me.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just glancing, but I just want to make sure I'm not missing. Our discussion about the parking on the street, was that a Q1? The staff was going to bring us something, I guess, a look at ordinance to see what we had.
It's the third item there.
It's the third.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Draft on-street parking ordinance. So we should have that to you.
I thought it was Q1, I just looked right over it.
As fast as our city attorney can work on it.
Yeah, I'm not rushing you. I just, I literally looked right over it, and I remember us talking about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Are any other questions on our Q1 goals? All right, so turning in your meeting packet, the other folder on your desk there. I know Beverly sent us out a, an agenda. Is this, this is a slightly amended agenda, right? Yes, so I think we've removed a little bit of fluff, just in the spirit of expediting the meeting, making sure we get the business we need to accomplish accomplished. But we've postponed a few things to our February meeting that could easily be postponed. So anyways, going over that, so of course, we got roll call, open prayer, pledge of allegiance. Mayor, you mind opening us in prayer again? You okay to give an open prayer? Okay. I don't, I doubt we're going to have any pastor here. So then we'll approve the agenda as submitted unless we make some changes. And we got our consent agenda and our permit request if Pastor White shows up. Then we've got privilege of the floor, staff reports. Don't have any old business, then we'll move into new business. So we're going to introduce a few ordinances here. Before we do that, I want, any questions on consent agenda or anything that we've gone through that is consistent with what was distributed last week? So Jonathan, tell us about these couple of ordinances and why we're doing that now. Of course, we're not going to vote on them today, but the importance of doing this stuff now.
Sure. So if you all recall, to change the salary for an elected official for municipality has to be done six months or soon, or later prior to an election. It doesn't impact the current office holders, but it does impact whoever's elected to those positions in the future. So as we have typically in the past had a citizens committee or somebody go out and review compensation for our elected officials, that hasn't been done in quite some time since about 2008. So I went back and I looked, actually, the League of Municipalities had put together a wage survey fairly recently in the last twelve months that talked about elected officials at the municipal level from places like Mobile all the way down to places like Op. And they ranked them in by population size typically for mayors and council members, and then talked about the benefits that they had. So in looking at that, one thing was obvious was that our mayor's salary was not adequate in terms of where it ranked amongst our peer groups. As an example, the mayor of Ozark, which is about half the size of Enterprise, makes about $7,000 more than the mayor of Enterprise. Mayor of Troy makes more. So if you look at smaller communities, they, and you deem the level of responsibility, just like we do with our various department heads and employees, you would have evidence to suggest that our mayor's salary is under the market value. In looking at the council pay, the council pay is what I would deem adequate, maybe even slightly better than your peer groups when you consider the full compensation. So most of the municipalities that were in that study did not offer health insurance to their elected officials. And so that's an added bonus plus the pay that was in there. So my recommendation to you and what you see there in that ordinance would be to leave the council salaries alone, but increase the mayor's salary to $57,000 from $47,500.
Any questions on that? So we're going to lay this over. You've got to do this six months prior to the election, if my memory serves me correctly.
Yes, sir. And it takes effect after the next election.
So it wouldn't take effect until November?
Yeah. February 26 is the drop-in.
The drop-dead date.
Yes, sir.
So our plan right now would be to introduce this today, lay it over until the February 4 meeting. If it passes on February 4, then we'll be well ahead of the February 26 date. So we've got two weeks. Of course, we could actually pass it at the second meeting in February. But, you know, we've got a couple of weeks to put this out there, to do any homework. Jonathan?
And I do believe I sent this out to you. It's probably been four or five months ago, but if you would like, I can get that salary study again with the benefits and resend that to you if that would be helpful.
Why don't you, if you could, just resend that to all of us, make sure we've got it? You know, these can obviously be, you know, hot-button issues. I would implore everybody to kind of be able to articulate why we're doing this if we're questioned. Of course, I do like the way the state law has it where we can't, we can't change our salaries. So it's going to be vetted by an election in August. It kind of keeps us accountable. So, you know, I remember Jonathan sharing this with us, and it does seem reasonable. We have done our homework. We've compared ourselves to peer cities, and, you know, this is a, you know, less than a 20% increase. And I know there's been more than 20% wage inflation just in the last four or five years. So I don't think we're out of line here. So, all right, next item is kind of along the same lines, but a different category of how we set certain department heads and how we hire them. So I know we've discussed this a little bit. Jonathan, explain us in more detail what's going on.
Yeah, so Mayor, council members, if you recall some of the conversations that we've had, particularly just recently in our strategic planning meeting, dealt with how do we retain our talent within the, in the city? How do we recruit talent in there? And so in the current model for your department heads that are not statutory, they're still appointed by the council with a salary that is set by the council at that time. So what we're looking at here would be to change all of the non-statutory department heads to more of a merit system. And that merit system would have a pay ban. So it might have two different, say Director One and Director Two. Director One would be a broad pay ban, which will come in an accompanying resolution. And they would also be eligible for merit pay increases that would be determined by their supervisor with approval by the mayor. So currently, our structure doesn't allow that. So every time that, you know, if fire chief or CFO or community service director were to be eligible for a raise, that would have to come back up to the council. We don't do that for any of our other employees that would typically be qualified for a merit increase, and it would be based on substantive review process, so a performance evaluation with a recommendation, as long as it was within the pay ban from the mayor and obviously within budget approved by the council.
And you mentioned the statutory positions. Those are fire, police, clerk, and treasurer, right?
Yes, sir.
So it doesn't apply to those specific appointments?
No, they will still be statutory in nature, but they will be pay-banded.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha. So the appointment will still be handled by the statutory prescription, but the way they're paid will go to this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha. Any questions? All right, again, we're going to just introduce this. Gives us two weeks to review it, and we will reconsider it for passage at our February meeting. Next item is an agreement between the city and ALDOT for bridge inspections.
Yes. So this is something that we had a request from ALDOT to do, and Barry Mott is not feeling well, so he's not going to be here today. So any of these things, I just told him I would handle them. This special work authorization from the Department of Transportation. We have seven bridges that are along, within the city limits or police jurisdiction that ALDOT maintains. So with those, we don't have people on staff that come in and inspect those. ALDOT would be giving permission to come in and inspect those bridges to make sure that they're safe to travel on. And that's really something we do, you know, periodically with ALDOT to review for safety. And you can see the cost is pretty minimal to ensure that safety, but make sure that they can handle the loads that they're rated for.
Any questions on this? All right, next item is to allow the police CTEC agreement with Biometrica Systems.
I'm going to ask Ashley to come up here, because I don't see Chief Moore. Couple of things. These programs based on, when we talked about license plate readers, they're different, but similar in vein to information and some of the concerns that the council had expressed in the past. And first, I'll tell you that our recommendation, the mayor, and my recommendation would be to support these programs. But we did want to make sure that you had an opportunity to speak with chief or city attorney about some of the nuances within the respective programs. So at this time, I'll let Ashley brief you guys on what she's found.
Good morning. I'm not certain how much I can brief you about the logistics of the software, because that's more of chief specialty, but I can tell you I've reviewed the contracts themselves. These are both programs that are not cost to the city. Biometrica, the first one, has a brochure attached to the back. These, from what I understand, is this one, like, for instance, if a potential, an alleged defendant might not give the police their name, they can maybe do like a scan or something like that. And the information goes to a public database that they have compiled of multi-states information. It's information that's not confidential. It's, you know, names, addresses, previous criminal history. So it's all public record that's made available in this database. That is something I could understand from chief. And that's Biometrica. Like I said, I don't really know much about how the software itself works. I just know about the agreement that they'd make with the city. Biometrica is able to capture images of individuals. And so the images that would be in this database are all those of public record, things like mugshots, you know, like I said, criminal history. It's that kind of information. I was assured that it's all public record and not. And what we would be doing is giving access to our public record in exchange to receiving access to this larger database, if that makes sense. And I think, from what I can tell on this other one, the National Insurance Crime Bureau, again, it's about the same thing. Again, it's a secure system that would have access to our information that is public record, that is out there. Again, chief assured me of that, and I wish he was here to tell you a little bit more about the difference. He didn't really give us...
Do they have retention? How long are the records?
So I have been assured that neither of them give much records out to people outside of these agencies. We know too much about record retention. Sorry, I didn't know. You're not going to be here.
That was a question that I know had come up, and obviously, you're not, you may have questions about that and may want to table this. But the retention records, my understanding is that these are maintained for, you know, almost perpetuity. So I know that was something that you were concerned about, some of the information on comings and goings when you were talking about license plate readers. I think this is a little different, because this is publicly sourced information that we have, and we're just enabling our department to share that with this broader database and allow our police department to get those records from other agencies.
You know, I would say there's a clear distinction between this and the license plate, and that I would assume that this is information that's being collected when there is an intentional intersection of this person with law enforcement for a valid and legal purpose. Typically, they've broken a crime, or they've been the victim of a crime, or there's probable cause.
Yes, sir.
There's not a broad and general collection of data like in the license plate.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's certainly my biggest takeaway, is there's that clear distinction.
And with that, too, and I know Mr. Raccino about things like this as well, but all the juvenile information is kept confidential. So juveniles, that is a separate court of law, and that's all confidential information. So that would not be part of this database.
Okay. Does he might have any questions? Would we be more, I'm certainly not privy to how the urgency of this, and would we be more comfortable discussing this with the chief? Or what's the council's thoughts?
I'm all for this. I mean, when you read human trafficking crimes against children, narcotics, and gangs, and it's like you said, there's a probable cause. And when you look back in here, it does say that all biometrics are discarded as are images with no matches. So if you're not doing anything wrong, you don't have a record of them, it's gone. And so this, to me, doesn't put handcuffs on our police. It allows them to do their job each and every day to catch those bad people out there harming our citizens, so. And if they come to us saying, hey, we need this, they've done the research on it. I'm not a policeman, but I'll certainly read on it and stuff, but they're the experts.
Any concerns or desire to lay this over?
No.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
All right. Would that, that sounds like it's, your recommendation, Jonathan, would be just to approve this?
Yes, sir. And it would be my recommendation, and Chief Davis just spoke to Chief Moore, and he is on his way here. So at some point, if you would like to talk to him about it, you'll have that opportunity.
Okay, good. Yeah. Yeah, we can circle back when he gets here. All right, next item is the, why don't we just hold off on both Biometrica and the metrica and National Insurance Crime Bureau? So skipping down to the bids on the budgeted vehicles.
Yeah, all of these vehicles were budgeted as part of our five-year capital plan. You have a three and a half, or three and a quarter ton pickup truck for the airport, one duly, one-ton pickup truck, Parks and Rec, and two four-by-two pickup trucks for Parks and Recreation, one four-by-four, one-ton pickup for sewer, and one four-by-four, one-ton pickup for street. Again, these are, if you recall the Excel spreadsheet that Barry showed you with the grading of some of our vehicles, these vehicles are in excess of 200,000 miles. Some of them are around 20 years old, some are 15 years old, but they're old and they're well-used. This will replace those, and these vehicles are part of that D and F category of our fleet.
So we're just working down through our plan to, kind of like we did the PCI index with our streets, we're working down through our plan to update our rolling stock.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on these budgeted purchases? All right, next two items are ABC license requests. Simply going to introduce those today and consider them at the February 4 meeting. Then we'll have mayor's report and council member comments and adjourn. So everybody good with that agenda? No additions or deletions? We'll speak with chief. I think we'll have plenty of time. If we don't, between now and noon, we can just let him come forward during the regular meeting. Back to our work session. Jonathan and I discussed the need for a executive session. Before we do that, why don't, Jonathan, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, give us a quick update on this winter storm? Any preparations that the city's taken forth, and maybe what we expect next couple of days?
Yeah, so we have had constant contact with EMA. I don't know how many of you get those emails from Grant Lions, but precipitation came down earlier than we anticipated today. It was supposed to start around noon or a little later in the afternoon. Obviously, for those of you that drove here, you probably went through a little snow. Our concern continues to be that that snow melts once it happens on, you know, gets on the ground and then turns to ice. So our neighboring county, Covington County, along with Op and Andalusia, have already closed all public roads, because they have been in it longer than we have at this point. And so we're going to continue to monitor that to see, you know, how much of a risk that poses to folks here in Coffee County, in the city of Enterprise. We have crews from Public Works that are already started to sand bridges in other low-lying areas that may have ice accumulate that they've experienced in the past, to keep those roadways open if possible. We waited until the last minute to do that because of the high winds that were expected to come with the storm. And, you know, if you put sand down 12 or 18 hours in advance and the wind comes, all the sand's gone by the time the precipitation comes. So I feel like we're ahead of that. We do have some delays because the precipitation came earlier. We pulled, made a decision, the mayor and I did, to pull all the vehicles that were out back into Public Works and Parks and Recreation. So I think citizens can continue, hopefully by Saturday, we'll get caught back up on trash. We have made the decision to come, have crews running on Saturday to try to catch up. But hopefully, the public will understand. I know Emily's put some information out on the trash schedule. But again, we even lost, we had a half a day today. We lost another couple hours this morning on that trash pickup, so we're still working on Monday's route. We'll start back, assuming that there's no accumulation of ice and it's able to be dissipated or mitigated. Thursday morning at 7:30, city services will be back up and running. Our Public Works crews will be on the road probably an hour before that. If there is a lot of ice or roadways are still in an unsafe condition, we'll make another weather call closer to that time. Cold weather, we've obviously got water crews on standby for the potential that there's disruptions in services from pipes bursting and freezing. But I know Alan Mahan and his team have done a good job trying to get ahead of that. But we seem to always have some, you know, onesies or twosies that come up throughout the process whenever we have prolonged freezing conditions for our water services. Wastewater, like I said, Public Works, everybody's topped off with gas. And I think we sent the crews home. The last I talked to Shannon and Barry, we sent all the crews that were on standby to come back in in the event of an emergency, home with city vehicles that had four-wheel drive.
All right, thank you for that update. Any questions?
Did anybody have any question on the warming center? Could I add a little bit to that? Yeah, I just got the keys for the First Methodist building down there. The CERT Community Emergency Response Team will be supporting that along with Coffee County EMA. We are waiting for Mr. Belcher at Christian Mission to say that they're overtaken by a lot of folks, and then they will open that up. If we do, it'd be like a six-to-six. Right now, no beds or anything, just water and just some place that people can get out. I was told yesterday they served over 56 meals for lunch, which is almost twice what they normally do. So people are coming in, but they're not staying. So they still have enough space over there for that. So if I get the call later today or tomorrow to open it up, we'll have the CERT folks along with Coffee County EMA down there at the First Methodist Church, and all that will go out through the city.
So if I understand what you said correctly, the Christian Mission is the primary center, and when it fills up, overflow would be First Methodist?
Yes. And that will be announced immediately. It'll take care of a lot of that through the city and through the Coffee County EMA's Facebook page, website.
All right, great.
I also will point out, I got a notification from Alabama Power that they had two additional crews staying with us in Enterprise for the next few days. So, let's see, two additional crews, and they're staged at the Fairfield Inn. So they'll be there on standby in case there's any power outages or ill effects from the storm.
Is the expectation that we will have some power outages?
I think anytime there's an accumulation of, you know, snow, especially, I think some of those were, went from one to three inches to five to seven inches on the snowfall, that there's some concern that, you know...
Down trees?
Down trees, you know, icy roads, vehicles colliding with poles. They're just precautionary measure by the power company, but I do feel like they've taken good precaution to make sure that Enterprise and their greater service territory are, you know, prepared to have crews to work.
All right. Any other questions, comments on winter weather? All right, I understand you've got a request to go into executive session concerning good name and character.
Yes, sir.
Is that the only subject?
The potential litigation, I guess, would be another one.
Okay. So legal advice regarding that, okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session regarding good name and character and legal advice regarding potential litigation.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for good name and character and litigation.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We expect this will take approximately 30 minutes. We'll be back before noon to adjourn our work session. No more discussion in work session. We'll convene in our regular meeting at noon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing. Motion carries. Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, he may as well pay.
Yeah.
He might not be in the week, he's helping a few dolphins.
That's what they call you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will call this meeting of the Enterprise City Council to order. The record show that all members are present with the exception of Councilman Paget. If you would please stand with me for opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Mayor Cooper is going to open us in prayer.
My heavenly Father, thank thee for this day and thank thee for the many blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us. As we move, dear Lord, with this meeting, knowing the conditions of the weather, we are looking at something that we haven't had to face. For God, possible safety for all of us. And as we move in the direction, let us be safe and sound as we try to carry out the business of this city. Whatever is done, let it be done decent and in order. These are the blessings we ask in our son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, for pledge allegiance, our pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Council, you should have the agenda as discussed in the work session just prior to this meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
Shrek. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now consider the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for review, are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of a member of the city council. I now call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now consider a request to address the council for a permit request from Pastor Willie White for the 2025 Juneteenth Parade. So, doesn't look like Reverend White is here, but he was going to represent John Chapel AME, who's requested to address the councils to obtain a permit for Saturday, June 14, 2025, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. With a rain date of Saturday, June 21, 2025, the parade in celebration and acknowledgement of the Juneteenth Emancipation Day Federal Holiday will begin at 303 North Main Street at Downtown Donuts and end at 306 South Main Street, which is Riverbank and Trust. Chief Moore.
Yes, sir. I was just going to present it somewhat for him, too. It's something we do every year. Would be happy to support it again this year.
All right. Any questions of Chief Moore? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the permit request as submitted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the permit requests. Is there any further discussion?
Not so much about the votes, sir, but I know that they were en route, so I think they got... The snow twisted them up and they went to City Hall. I'm like, you haven't been to City Hall since 23, but that's all.
All right. Well, if, Sonya, if he wants to say something, you can recognize him during your comments if you think he wants to say something. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next item is purposed to the floor. This is part of the meeting where anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to address the council, I should say this afternoon, who wishes to address the council may do so for three minutes. If there is a public hearing on the agenda for the topic you're concerned with, please wait until public hearings. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? So I will save everybody from reading all that. We'll go straight to the staff reports. Do we have any staff reports? Chief, you going to give a staff report?
Yes, sir. My apologies for missing you earlier. Just real quick, so there's two agreements. The first one's for Biometrica. What it is, is information sharing with little law enforcement agents. This is mostly public information. Information from arrests, photos, arrest warrants, things like that. Biometrica takes that information, puts it into Nationwide, and it uses in public places that has the system to identify people that are wanted, warrants, sex offenders, things like that. I know the city of Oxford has... The reason why we get two user agreements and we don't purchase anything, if we were to purchase something like Oxford does, is they have a system that they put around their schools and their parks to identify sexual predators and things like that. Numerous other departments are doing it. Dothan just signed on, Dale County. The sheriff is talking about it. He's in the same kind of process I am. It doesn't cost us anything to share the information, other than they... And they pay the cost to be able to meet up with our information system to share that information. So it's just an agreement for us to share it with them and then give us two user IDs, or user agreements.
So when we take a mugshot, when we scan fingerprints, they're going to interface with our system and it uploads it to a database?
Yes, sir. And if there's a picture that goes along with a warrant, they also get access to the warrant. So if he's in somewhere that hits it in Jacksonville, Florida, and we have three felony warrants, it notifies us that he's there.
And it does it not just with the name and social date of birth? It'll do it with biometrics?
Biometrics, yes, sir. It's not AI. And not only does it hit, they only do a certain percentage of the biometrics before they have somebody, an actual human that identifies, says that's probably the guy, then they send people out to verify. So there's still numerous verifications prior to, you know, putting handcuffs on or whatever else. But it's just another tool for us to use in conjunction with other law enforcement agents.
All right. Any questions on the Biometrica?
The second one is, again, another user agreement. The National Insurance Crime Bureau allows my investigators, after training, to enter their system and peruse if there's a convicted or there's somebody that has, you know, filed for insurance claims six times in a row, but we don't know it, but they file for a stolen car here. They can get information off of that person of how many times and starts hitting the red flags of maybe this person is committing a crime of fraud or theft or something to that effect. So it's just, again, not anything that goes, yep, that's the person we're going to arrest, but it just gives us another tool to use to get information on somebody for criminal purposes.
All right. Any questions on the National Insurance Crime Bureau agreement?
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
Any other staff reports?
Mayor, council members, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We have our staff working on some potential recommendations on road closures. As the situation continues to unfold, it looks like that might be more and more probable at some point over the next 24 to 48 hours. My goal is, before we leave the council meeting today, to have some verbiage for you and the mayor to look at, to see how it reads to the public and make sure it meets your intent with what we're trying to do in practice.
All right. Any other staff reports? All right. Moving on to old business, of which we have none. New business, got a few ordinances to introduce here. First, we'll introduce ordinance 012125 to establish the salary of the mayor. I introduce ordinance 012125 providing to establish the salary of the mayor as $57,000 annually, effective the first Monday of November 2025, in accordance with Code of Alabama 1975 11-43-80. We will lay that over for consideration at the next council meeting on February 4th. Next ordinance we'll introduce is ordinance 012125. Next ordinance we'll introduce is ordinance 012125A to set the certain department heads and employee hiring. I introduce ordinance 012125A providing to set procedures for the hiring of certain department heads and city positions. Again, we're just introducing that at this meeting. We'll lay that over and consider it at the February 4th meeting. Next item is authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with AL... With Alabama Department of Transportation regarding bridge inspections. I'll call for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a special work authorization agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for the inspection of seven bridges within the city of Enterprise at a cost of $2,355.49. Do I hear a motion?
Move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to execute this agreement. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now consider authorizing the police chief to execute an agreement with Biometrica Systems Incorporated. I call for a motion to authorize the police chief to execute a no-cost agreement between the Enterprise Police Department and Biometrica Systems Incorporated. The agreement, in exchange for two user licenses, will enable the department to share information obtained from EPD Computer Automated Dispatch within the law enforcement community. Do I hear a motion?
I move to authorize the police chief to execute the agreement as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the police chief to execute this agreement. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now consider authorizing the police chief to execute an agreement with the National Insurance Crime Bureau. I call for a motion to authorize the police chief to execute a no-cost agreement with the National Insurance Crime Bureau, otherwise known as NICB, related to the investigation and prosecution of crime, including but not limited to insurance-related crime and fraud and homeland security activity. Do I hear a motion?
Move to authorize the police to execute the agreement as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the police chief to execute this agreement. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now have a request to seek bids for FY 2025 budgeted vehicles. I introduce and call for consideration of a request from City Engineer, Public Works Director Barry Mont to seek bids for the following FY 2025 budgeted vehicles. From the airport, one three-quarter ton four-by-four pickup for Parks and Rec. One four-by-four duly one-ton pickup truck with utility body. Two three-quarter ton four-by-two pickups with utility body. For sewer, one four-by-four one-ton pickup truck with utility body. And for street, one four-by-four one-ton pickup with utility body. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the request to seek bids as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request to seek these bids. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. When I introduce an ABC license request for the Butcher's Daughter Deli and Market, I introduce a request from the Butcher's Daughter Deli and Market LLC, doing business as the Butcher's Daughter Deli and Market, for a retail beer and retail wine on or off premises license located at 208 North Main Street. Additionally, I'll call for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for February 4th, 2025. Now we'll introduce an ABC license request for Magnolia Gaming. I introduce a request from Magnolia Gaming LLC, doing business as Magnolia Gaming, for a retail beer and retail wine on or off premises license located at 117 North Main Street. I call for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for February 4th, 2025. Mayor, you have a report for us? No?
Thank you, Mr. President. As this winter of weather comes in, I want to remind everyone to please be safe and use your best judgment. Do not put yourself or our first responders in harm's way. Follow our social media page for updates. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Rich?
Just to our listening audience, be safe. Enjoy the snow.
Ms. Goolsby?
I wish everybody to be safe also and remember your four Ps, your plants, your pipes.
Pets.
Pets.
Your pets.
People.
And your people.
And your people. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Pipes being one of the more important ones.
Right now, yes.
Go ahead.
Now, just everybody be careful out there. Be safe. And for city workers out there, stay safe there. And thank you to our first responders going out on all these calls that needed to be. God bless.
Yep, what everybody said. So we will stand adjourned until 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 4th, the council work session, followed by 6:00 o'clock council meeting. We will see you in a couple of weeks.